All right, but I do have eight and it is 6:01. So it is my honor to call the Board of Education Special Meeting Budget Workshops Committee, the whole slash, well, there's Beverly, yay. To order in at 6:01 and today's date is February 7th, 2022. And our first order of business is the solar panels at the schools.
And we have a presenter coming.
Oh, we do. Are they here?
I'm looking for their name.
Kim, excuse me for just a moment. I'll be right back.
Absolutely, Matt.
She's here, Emily.
Yes.
Okay, she's here.
I'm looking around for my co-presenters.
Welcome to my world. Would that be Alan?
Yep.
I see Vince that I don't know. Is Vince one of your co?
Vince is a community member. I've talked to him a couple of times. Yeah, Vince, I'm glad that you're here.
Hello, thank you.
Okay, and I think my other one is coming on shortly, and I do have some slides to show if that's okay.
Yep. Mark, do we have everybody or Caitlin, do we have everybody able to share slides tonight?
Thank you.
Okay, good.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen.
I think I also sent your slides out to the board members, but it was, I think, today when I received them, so.
Thank you. Okay. Can you guys see those?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I think my other co-presenter is jumping on, so I'll just get started. Thank you, everyone, for having us at your meeting this evening. My name is Emily Basham, and I'm with the Connecticut Green Bank. And we are here to talk about solar projects on two of the Groton schools. I'm joined eventually by my colleague Mackie Dykes, who is our VP of Financing Programs at the Connecticut Green Bank, and also Alan Saban from CSW Energy. So we've been working with the town for the last two years to design solar projects at Mystic River Magnet and Groton Middle as follow-on projects to the construction and renovation work being done. And tonight, we're here to introduce ourselves and present the final projects and agreements to the BOE. So Groton's been participating in the Solar MAP program of the Connecticut Green Bank. The Connecticut Green Bank is a quasi-public state agency created by the legislature in 2011. And we were charged with providing sustainable, long-term financing for energy efficiency and clean energy projects. We use the limited public dollars that we receive to attract multiples of private capital to make clean energy investments in the state and help us meet our clean energy goals. And we've partnered with dozens of municipalities across the state since our inception to offer financing for solar projects through what's called a power purchase agreement. And I'll go into the specifics of what a power purchase agreement is here in a couple of slides. But through this work, we know that there's a lot of steps and barriers to work through to do a solar project that are in addition to financing the project. So three years ago, we created this program specifically for towns and cities to help our municipalities and provide technical assistance in addition to financing. So the Connecticut Green Bank partnered with CSW Energy to support Solar MAP, selected through an RFP. And CSW Energy is very experienced in developing municipal solar PV projects. And there are technical partners for the program. They provide the building and system analysis. So the goals with Solar MAP with this program are really to just be a trusted partner, leading towns through every step of the process to going solar. And that's from the early stages of identifying, you know, where is a good site for a solar project, all the way through the financing and construction and the long-term management of the system. So on the screen are the, kind of the program steps. And we're really at the final step, looking to execute a power purchase agreement. But I think it's worth just kind of walking through these steps to show our approach and the work that's been done to put the projects together. So first, with, you know, starting off with site analysis and project development, we worked with the town staff and stakeholders to gather a lot of information about these two sites and see, you know, of all the sites, which ones are good candidates for solar projects, you know, looking at roof age and electric bills. And then working with our partners at CSW Energy, we got onsite, did site walks, we developed system designs. And then we secured the utility incentives that are available for these projects called ZRECs. And we put this all together in preliminary project proposals. And the preliminary project proposals helped us understand that these projects were technically feasible, and they could also provide energy savings to the town. And so that leads us to the third step. We included them in an RFP to select an installer partner who would build these systems. So the RFP that we ran last fall included nine other towns who also participated in Solar MAP and went through these steps concurrently. So we were able to include Groton's projects in a larger portfolio of projects to achieve economies of scale and really get competitive pricing with our installer partner. So that leads us to the final step, the fourth step where we are now. We've got all of the pieces in place and finalized the project proposals, which we'll go over tonight. Once they're approved and PPAs are hopefully signed, we would move on to onboarding the installer partner and then constructing the projects. As I mentioned, we created this program about three years ago. So this is our second round of towns. We've had about 14 or 15 towns go all the way through the Solar MAP program. And this is sort of our cohort of rounds. Groton's participating in round two. This group is 22 projects, four megawatts of solar. And our projects are providing solar energy at a discount to the utility energy, about a third. And lastly, we've had about 14 or 15 towns, as I said, go through the program. But there's a much larger network of Connecticut towns that we've worked with and provided financing through a power purchase agreement for a solar project. So now I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Mackie to run through what a power purchase agreement is, and then we can go over the actual projects at Groton Middle and Mystic River Magnet.
Great, thanks Emily. Thanks, everyone, for letting us join tonight. So wanted to talk through the actual agreement structure for how the solar would happen. Instead of the BOE going out and purchasing the solar system yourself, we'll instead do the project through this power purchase agreement. And there's several reasons for this, which we'll talk about. But first, how does it work? So, as I said, instead of you actually buying the system, the Green Bank and our partners will essentially buy it, will build it, and will own it, and will sell you the power from that system. So we'll front all the capital for the project, we'll oversee the development, the construction. And then for the term of the PPA, which is 20 years, we'll be responsible for all the asset managements, all the operations and maintenance. The BOE will simply purchase the electricity from the system. Next slide. The primary benefit of this structure is the upfront savings that you receive. So there's no cost. You just immediately receive a discount to your utility bill. So the price of the electricity from, at the simplest, the price of the electricity from the solar system is cheaper than buying it from the utility. So right now, you're getting an electric bill for each of the buildings. After the project, you'll still get that energy bill from the utility. It'll just be a lot less because you're not buying all your electricity from them. It'll be partly replaced by a payment to us for the solar power. When you combine that with the reduced energy bill, it's less than what you're paying now. Next slide. Some of the other benefits of this, as I mentioned, there's no upfront cost. And as the owner of the system, the Green Bank and our partners are responsible for all the operations and maintenance. And we bear most of the risk under this because it's our money that, you know, we're paying for the system, and we only get paid back if the system's performing. You're also able to lock in the electric rate. This would be a fixed price for throughout the 20 years. So, you know, utility costs tend to go up over time. So you'll be, to a certain degree, insulated from that expected increase in utility cost. One of the other benefits not mentioned here, actually, though, is, you know, there's a lot of federal tax incentives that make solar pencil out. You know, a town and BOE doesn't pay tax, federal taxes, obviously. So that money is just left on the table when you purchase the system. So power purchase agreement is the, we're able to, you know, through our partners monetize those tax credits and pass some of the benefit on to you through the lower PPA price. This is the structure that nonprofits, municipalities, BOE, the state of Connecticut, unless they're, you know, receiving grants or incredibly cheap funding, this tends to be the structure that makes the most economic sense again because of, you know, the fact that those federal tax credits are just left on the table under a purchase scenario. So I think the next slide is going to move us right into the projects. Before we jump into that, though, since we just went through a lot with the program and then that structure, the PPA structure, we paused to take any questions. If that's appropriate.
So just wanted to make sure that the board understands that this is just a presentation tonight. There is no voting on this tonight because it's not in our agenda as a vote. And I do know that you guys have been working with, probably Sam could help answer this question too. You've been working with the permanent school building committee, I would assume. Is that correct?
Yes, they've been working with Rick Norris and the committee, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. So are there questions from the board so far about what has been presented?
I'd like to hold my questions till the end.
Okay, Andrea? You're muted.
Thank you. I hate that. I have two questions, and one may be naive. The first one is, how do you make money? I don't see anything about the company that's doing this getting paid. I don't know where the money's coming from. And the second one is, you know, 20 years is a long time. Five years from now, the system could be outdated. What happens then?
On the first question, we get paid by selling you the power. So it's a, you know, you're paying less than you would have paid from the utility, but you're still paying something. So that's how we get repaid. And our investors get paid back from the capital that we front to build the project. In terms of the second question, all the equipment, whatever you want to say, equipment risk or responsibility for keeping the equipment up and running rests with us. So if, and as we would expect over 20 years, certain pieces of the system aren't expected to last that long. So it's our responsibility to replace that equipment with, you know, whatever's the best available at the time. Which, to get to your first point, we're not going to get paid back unless the system's up and running. So, you know, we're incentivized to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing any equipment replacements or any other work or maintenance that needs to happen to the system in a timely manner.
Can I ask a follow-up? Kim? Kim, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Yes.
So I'm not talking about things that break. I'm talking about things that needed to be upgraded. You know, the things that, there are new inventions, there are new, there's new thinking. How do you accommodate for that?
I guess we, both sides go into this eyes wide open on what the expectations are with the existing equipment and the sort of the savings that you'll see with that. I mean, we'll get into here and talk about the projects here. But, you know, we would expect this equipment to be good and functional, at least on the panel side. And again, some of the other pieces we'll have to replace. But we expect this to, especially on the panel side, to work for 20 years and produce the savings that we all expect to see from the project. So we wouldn't plan on replacing functioning equipment with anything different.
Thank you.
I'm going to recognize Jay and then Bev.
I'm going to hold my financial questions, but I'm just curious. These obviously are brand-new buildings. So will this installation in any way damage the brand-new roofs on these buildings? Since these panels are only going to last 20 years, we expect the roofs to last much longer than that. And because you say you're going to own it, then obviously if there's a hailstorm, that's your issue. And at the end of it, when it comes time to dispose of all the toxic waste, that's on you as well.
On the first question, yes, new roofs are ideal for solar or newer roofs because you're right, the life will extend beyond, life of the roof is going to extend beyond the panels. You don't have to worry about trying to replace the roof with panels on there. We, at this point, until we, you know, sign the contract and do a structural review, we can't say whether we'll need to actually attach the panels to the roof. But either way, we will work with your warranty holder to, whatever's in the pre-, post-inspections, to make sure that, you know, there's no issues in terms of jeopardizing that warranty. And, you know, if, God forbid, there is some sort of damage that materializes later, you know, leak or anything that the solar is the fault of, then that's our responsibility to, you know, to fix it. In terms of the, yeah, you're right, the risk of hail, any damage to the equipment is our risk, and we carry insurance against that. And then the final question on the end-of-life, there's a couple of options. One, we just come remove the system. And you're at all disposal and bringing the roof back to normal is our responsibility. We can extend the power purchase agreement. You know, there is still expected life in the system after 20 years. Or you can purchase the system from us at whatever the remaining fair value for the equipment is.
Thank you.
So I'm going to do Beverly and then Sam.
Thank you. I think you answered my first question, what happens after 20 years? My second question is, what happens if the company goes bankrupt?
So the company, so there's a couple of different parties to this. There is the company that's going to actually install the system. That's, the Green Bank will choose that installer and pay them. And, you know, we'll get workmanship warranties and things like that through them. They go bankrupt, that's really us that loses out there. We still have the obligation to sell you the power and keep the system up and running. Your counterparty will be initially us, and then we have a nonprofit that we're associated with. You need, you can't just have, you know, to the point about the federal tax credits. We don't pay taxes either. So we, and just sort of per our model, we work with private investors to leverage our public dollars. So, you know, we have a nonprofit that we actually do these projects through. They will be the counterparty to the PPA, but we're the investor in that. So if they go bankrupt, then the Green Bank steps in as the owner to the system. And as a quasi-state agency, you know, we can't, we're an entity of the state. We wouldn't go bankrupt and in more, I guess the rest for us would be somehow the state getting rid of us or something. But the state, I mean, they can't, legislature can't break contracts. So the state will have the obligation, no matter what, to, you know, to stand behind these projects as an investor in them.
Okay, thank you. So you're saying that if you go bankrupt, bankruptcy happens in any form or fashion, we're safe? Got the long and short of it?
Yeah, really, we can't declare bankruptcy.
Okay. Thank you.
Sam?
Yeah, Mackie, I was informed through Rick Norris that these systems were going to be ballast systems, which would not, we wouldn't have penetrations in a roof, very limited number of penetrations in a roof. So, and I would, I would probably insist that that would be the type of system that we would want on our roofs.
Yeah, that's certainly the preference that where we go in. As I said, you know, we, for every system, we're doing that. That's getting the structural engineer in there to make sure the hosting capacity of the roof can handle that. And also that, you know, things like wind and stuff, that we can't have any rest that those panels are going to come off the roof. So that's, then we'll have to do that report to ultimately confirm that. But that's certainly the case going out. I want to be careful with my words. We didn't want to 100% confirm that, given the need to do that report.
Dean, I saw you.
Yeah, thanks. Two questions. One, you may have covered this, and I may have missed it. Size of the project rooms, the kilowatts that you project?
We haven't covered that yet. Maybe we do that next couple of slides, or do you guys want to keep?
Okay, and I'll have one more question, and that can be asked anytime, but I'm already on. So is there a model, text model agreement that one could peruse?
Yes, the power purchase agreement has been provided. Sam has it, and we can circulate it along with, I could provide it to Joyce or whoever else to get it circulated.
All right, thank you.
Rita?
I have two quick questions. One is, are you exploring, is the town of Groton exploring doing this on any other of their town-owned buildings?
I believe that we started with the list of buildings that were only available for the program through being serviced by Eversource. And then it was actually the committee and town staff that selected these two sites as preferred.
Right, but I meant like town.
At this point, no, we're not reviewing any other town buildings.
Because if you did, would that bring the electricity rate down further?
The proposed rates that we'll get into are specific to each site. So they're more relative to, they're determined by really the conditions of the system that we can install, not necessarily how many projects we do.
All right, and my second question is, do you also do solar fields? Like panels and fields, like if you go down Route 95 in Westbrook, there's a very large solar field. Do you do that?
We do look at ground-mounted installations, but we don't typically develop those large, massive, you know, acres upon acres of solar installations. There's quite a robust activity of developers that are doing those projects. And so we're really sort of focusing our efforts on developing projects with our municipal partners.
Thank you.
How about if you move forward? Because I think that there's other questions coming, but it might be answered in your presentation.
Okay, Emily, you want me to? Okay, I'll take these. This is Mackie. So first, the middle school, and Dean, here we go, these are the details you were asking about. So project size, just over 300 kilowatts. If you look at the image on the right, the little black squares represent the proposed locations of the panel, of the panels. You've got the production there. And to give you some context of that annual production, look at the last number, the percent solar offset to utility. So what does that mean? That we look at, how much does the electricity does this building use in a year? And how much of that will the solar system be able to offset? And that's 32%. So, you know, obviously, we like that number to be higher because we like more green power, plus the more solar you're buying, the less more expensive utility power you're buying. But in this case, we're limited by just the roof space that's available. So we're only able to offset around 32% of the usage of the building. You're currently paying just under 10 cents per kilowatt hour from Eversource. The proposed PPA rate would be 7.7 cents. So that's a 26% discount to the Eversource or to the utility power. So essentially, 32% of your power would be 26% cheaper. Next slide. Does Mackie, did you have a figure that would go with that, what that would mean in dollars? Yes, well, about to get to that. I think we've got that at the end.
Sorry.
Yeah, and then the Magnet School system, about half the size. And again, limited by the roof space here. We can produce just over 20% of what the Magnet School uses. PPA rate here is slightly higher, 0.7 or 7.9 cents, which is a 21% discount. So they're the bottom-line numbers to the question that was just asked. Let's go to the next slide. So the first year, we'd expect you to save just over $10,000. And then over the term, almost $400,000. And then you see this other number in there, average annual savings. So what does that mean? Why is it different than the first-year savings? Well, we, as we all experience, utility rates don't stay the same. We would anticipate, and it has historically borne out, they rise. So, and that rise, it tends to be around 3% if you look at it over decades. We were a little conservative in the number. I think we used 2% here, Emily. All right, yeah. So we've assumed that utility prices rise 2%. So again, as that, as your purchase price for electricity goes up, your avoided cost for electricity is higher. So you're saving more because the PPA rate is fixed. So that average number is, obviously, the average annual savings across the 20 years as you see the electricity prices increase. So I think we have a next step slide, or we can, why don't we go to that? Emily, you want to take it from here? I have a question.
Sure. Um, so we've got the final PPA rates and and a power purchase agreement, which we can circulate to more inboxes after the meeting. And we're looking to have all the towns in this round consider and hopefully approve and execute power purchase agreements this month or next month. And once those are signed, we would onboard the contractor partners that we've selected competitively through our RFP in this second quarter of this year. Once they're brought up to speed, they will start doing all of the engineering, the full engineering and final designs of the systems, and then submitting the projects to the respective town departments for permitting and approval. And then we would look to actually start constructing these projects in Q3 or Q4 of this year. And that brings us to the end. So we'd be happy to take the additional questions.
Beverly.
Okay, I'm sorry. What is the initial out of pocket costs for the Board of Education?
There is no out of pocket cost. So part of the the goals of this program is is to provide this additional project development and technical support for no cost. And because we're the the structure of using a power purchase agreement, the Green Bank is owning these systems. So we are providing all of the upfront capital to construct these projects. So there's, there's no cost. The only obligation is that once these systems are turned on, you're agreeing to just buy the power that's generated from them.
And my second question is, Mr. Make sure you can hear me. And my second question is, do you use union labor?
We don't, we don't have a requirement for that in our RFPs when we procure the the construction.
Do you think you will use union labor or what?
Um, let's see, I I would have to check with the with the chosen installer. It's not something we we typically ask for. So I can't speak to whether, in this case, whether the contractor plans to to use union labor. But it's something we we can find out.
Thank you.
Matthew, do you have questions?
I do. I have several questions. Why don't I just ask them all at once? And you can take them in whatever order you think is most appropriate. I understood you to have said that the cost we'll pay over the 20 year term will be stable and not change at either point 079 or point 077, depending on the building. Was my understanding correct?
Yes.
My second question is, assuming that there that needs to be dismantled at the end of the 20 years, you are the owner. Can you reaffirm that you will bear all of the cost for the dismantling, if that's what's needed? And similarly, could you tell me, that's going to generate lots of waste. Can you tell me how you plan to handle all of that waste at the end of project life? Because that's also an environmental factor. Bear with me one more second. You mentioned that at the end of the 20 year period, it would be removed or extended, or that there would be a, we would have the option of purchasing it at his at a residual depreciated price. Is that residual purchase value defined in the agreement? And then finally, I understand we can't do all things at once. But was there any particular reason that Thames River and Fitch High School were not considered to do these all at the same time? So we would have more space and generate more power. Thank you so much for your consideration.
I'm gonna take a stab at it.
Sure.
I think the first question was regarding the fixed caught, the fixed PPA price. You're correct in your understanding that it won't change over the 20 years. The the 7.9 and 7.7 cents.
Thank you.
It's be, um, the end of term options confirming that we we are responsible for removing the panels and returning the buildings to their original condition. There are other options in the contract. As you mentioned, the option to purchase the panels. And that is a fair market value. It's not defined. That price is not defined in the contract now, since we we don't know what the panels will be worth in 20 years. So it's it's determined at at the time. Um, regarding the other projects under consideration, the the these two projects were sort of brought to us as initial projects to sort of, I would say, you know, as it was explained, as be sort of demonstration projects as like a first phase of projects. So there wasn't any extenuating reasons why the other two sites that you mentioned weren't considered. I don't think we can.
Actually, no, there so Fitch, we like the roof was too old there. We never, we don't want to have a situation where we're putting solar on a roof that the expected life is going to be shorter than the PPA term. Because then you're going to have to pull that system off to replace the roof. Or, you know, you could, the the likelihood of leaks and stuff increases. And then Tim's River is, it's served by Groton Utility, not Eversource. And Groton Utility does not offer they said they don't compensate you for the for the solar power that you produce. So the economics don't look there.
Great answers.
And then in terms of the waste, I, we don't know yet. That that's 20 years off. The it's a, it's a very good question and one that industry and customers are grappling with to to figure out how to deal with. All these panels are going to be reaching end of life in, you know, five to 20 years. But I can say that, you know, as an organization that's driven, mission is driven by producing carbon emissions, we're going to, at minimum, follow whatever and and work with, you know, getting regulatory structures in place to to govern this and at minimum, we're going to follow those. But right now, I did, that's, like I said, sort of an evolving thing within the industry and not something my, sorry, even then I can answer.
Kim, may I ask one more follow up question?
Sure.
With regard, the residual purchase value, I understand the necessity for doing an unfair market value at that time and how difficult that would be to prepare. But how would you personally respond to defining the process by which the fair market value would be determined within our agreement?
Um, I believe it's defined in the agreement is that we we can mutually decide upon an appraiser to come determine the the value. So we we again, we mutually select an entity to to figure out that that price for us. You know, there, there's a couple other, I mean, frankly, there, we we might just look at the, I mean, think it's 20 years from now. But, you know, the the this is in the kind of the contract. But I mean, you asked what my reply would be, my personal one would be. I mean, I think in a lot of cases, whatever the cost to remove is, is going to be more to us than the 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 value. So, you know, I, we're going to take that, it'll be a negotiation and I would anticipate taking that in. And, you know, in some cases, you know, there, it might just be a, we turn it over to you. But we can't put that in the contract because of the, we can't put a definite price or hand over to you because of issues around the tax credits. The the IRS just won't let us put that in there. So, I mean, like, there is a process in the contract to determine the value by us agreeing upon an appraiser to to determine that. If it, you know, if it comes to that, or, you know, it can be negotiated based upon sort of removal cost and sort of how much value we both both think is there.
Thank you very much.
So next steps would be, and where's my friend Sam Kilpatrick?
Here.
Thank you, sir. What are our next steps?
I believe the next step would would be for the finance committee to get together and determine whether this would, whether they would want to move forward with this and move it on to the full board.
Jay, would you assert to that, would that make, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think it would be good for for us to see the the actual purchase power agreement and see if there are any other questions before before we approve it.
I'm also wondering, Jay, I'm also wondering if it would make sense for us to also have someone from the the permanent school building also. Sam, I know that you're part of that. But just to kind of hear what their process has been thinking about the the organization. It kind of makes sense to me so that because it, has it already been approved, Sam, by the permanent school building?
No, they've just acted more or less have just, Rick Norris through the town has really handled this. It's going through Rick Norris and the and Public Works Department, more so than the Permanent School Building Committee updating as they went along.
Okay, okay. So maybe that's our point of contact. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Susan, does the board then, is it then the, is it my understanding correct? Is then it needs to come back to the board for final sort of vote and approval? Is that correct?
Yes, I do like Jay's idea, though, to take a closer look with Ken and Sam, and if there's someone from the town who is, you know, helping to orchestrate this, they should be there too.
And and I'm wondering, for the will of the board, does it make sense that it's just the finance and facilities? Or is this another committee of the whole meeting where we all kind of grapple with the issue?
Kim, I think it should, I I think it should go to finance and let them, you know, pare it down and get it, get it presentable and then bring it to the COW.
Okay, Liz.
I concur, I concur, excuse me. I concur with Andrea.
All right. Right, Jay, Jay, will it be, will you be able to kind of get it on to the agenda pretty quickly?
Yes, I mean, we, due to budget, we're not meeting this month.
Okay.
But we can meet at the beginning of March.
Okay.
What is the timeline? What is the timeline that you folks are looking at to to get this reasonably signed? So you can, you can move on it.
I mean, we had hoped February, but understand there's a that's not not possible here, given what was just outlined. So March would be, would be ideal, into March. And so what's driving us is there's a, we have, you know, I think as Emily mentioned, part of our process was to secure the incentives for the project from the utility. There's a deadline on those. We need to have the systems placed in service by a certain point in time. So that that that's sort of what starts driving it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to having an earlier finance meeting if the superintendent can find a spot for another meeting.
Yeah, so unfortunately, this, it's very difficult for the Board of Ed at the very beginning of the year because we actually, we get proposed the superintendent's budget for next year in January, in January, and we have to, it has to be by town charter. It has to be ours by February 28th. We've had to vote on it. And we are in the midst of doing that at the present moment. So so I I don't think that we're not trying to be difficult. I think we're just trying to say, we want to, we want to hear, I think we want to hear more information. I think it's important that we kind of get a better look at that here from the town town side about what they're thinking about that. So that when we make a vote, we're making a vote that's meaningful and productive and has been thoughtful because we're looking at 20 years. So, um, so I think that that's where I would like to leave that. If you guys have further questions, and maybe, maybe one of your representatives can zoom into the meeting of the financing facilities so that if there are questions, they can be, that they can be asked. And maybe those questions for board members, if you have additional questions and you're not on the financing facilities, please make sure that Jay or Susan gets them so that they can answer those in your in your behalf. But that also know that we're going to get a chance to be able to talk, talk about it as well, again.
I'm really glad, though, that you came to the entire board with the slideshow and we could get this rocking and rolling and have these conversations and elicit these questions and take a deeper dive into what this is going to mean. I think that was really helpful. So I appreciate it.
I agree.
Thank you. And I did not mean to, I wasn't trying to pressure you all to rearrange your schedule for us. Certainly, under 20 years is a long time. This is a serious commitment. So, and yeah, I think the the timeline that was outlined is fine. We can work with that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of what what we are facing right now. In fact, once you guys leave, leave our thing, we are going to be going into a budget workshop. So that's great. Bev, do you have a, for the question for them?
Yeah, not for them, probably for Susan or Sam. Is this the only company that we talked to so far? Or did we talk to other companies that provide solar power?
So that would be a good question to give to Jay. So that Jay, when he, when the public works person comes and has a conversation. And I actually, Bev, I think you're part of that committee. So that would be a really good question to ask. All right, listen, thank you very much for showing up on our screen. I really appreciate that. Um, you did a great job presenting and we wish you have a fun evening. I guess that's, I don't know what I'm saying, but have a fun evening.
Thank you for having us on your agenda. We appreciate it. We look forward to chatting with you guys again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I'm going to move this meeting for Susan and Ken. And it looks like our next thing is support services, staff and general support. Is that correct?
Yes, we have quite an ambitious schedule, but let's rock and roll and see how far we go.
Let's do it.
So Phil is on and he's going to start us out with support services and staff and really the whole teaching and learning department and the work that, you know, Paula helps us with every day.
All right, everybody. Good evening. Hello. I'll take you through this. What you're looking at your screen right now is just the outline of who is up here in teaching and learning, the data manager. That is Tom Lonsdale, who we all know. It would probably be easier for me to list the things he he doesn't do. But I'll try to outline, you know, he is, he generates and analyzes and reports all the data that we look at in the district. He does a lot more than that. He, you know, he's a district wide testing coordinator. He helps us analyze our standardized testing data, prepare statistical reports that we've looked at here in the meetings, and he's been part of presentations. He helps me co lead the district data team, which we did today, where we look at look at data across all levels of the district in terms of attendance, in terms of academic achievement. And and look at it a number of different ways, most recently, of course, under the equity lens. But he's really a jack of all trades and of course, he runs our student information system as well, Power School. It generates a lot of our data through that for all of our our state reports. The grade six through 12 curriculum coordinators, those are all half positions. So we have three of them. We have one math, one ELA, and one social studies slash world language. So those are six through 12 positions, all half positions, which equal to the 1.5. So those are six through 12 positions, all half positions, which equal to the 1.5.
And science, right? And science, right? Well, the STEM, the one is STEM. Science, Technology, Engineering and Math. And then the other is Humanities, which is your Social Studies and World Language.
Okay.
And then one, one person for ELA.
Sorry, I was using the wrong titles.
That's all right.
And the clerical, of course, is Paula up in the office with me. Looking below on 579. You could see the salary for Tom's position as well as the three coordinators, as well as the clerical. There's a line in there for some OT occasionally when when Paula has to work extended hours. Under the salaries and wages, those are the general increases with the insurance and the workman's comp and social security and Medicare. The line items for travel for admin and travel for workshops and conventions, those are for all of teaching and learning. The the travel for administration, you know, takes care of Tom going around. He does a lot of work in all the different buildings and is often traveling. From building to building throughout the throughout the district. And the workshops is for. Again, for for all of teaching and learning, for some of the workshops we've gone to for the student information system. I've gone some for the NYPD program and that takes care of travel for that. Professional materials. Professional materials includes books, materials for training. The Marshall Memo, which I know a lot of us are familiar with, we should all be receiving copies of that. And the dues in general, the general admin dues include the Connecticut Library Consortium, ASCD. The National Council of the Teaching of Math, NCTM, those are district wide dues that we pay for 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 all of our teachers. I think that covers everything in this section. Not sure if anybody has questions. See Bev?
Bev?
Can you please explain again, line 108? The grade six through 12 curriculum coordinators, what do they do? What specifically do they do? And are they full time, part time? I missed that. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The coordinators are halftime teachers and point five administration. So their their workday, they have one teaching day, they teach three classes. They attend admin meetings, they attend student support meetings, SRBI meetings, building administrative meetings. And during their administrative day, they engage in informal observations of teachers. They meet with assigned teachers three times a year, their goal setting conferences, their mid mid year conferences, end of year conferences. As well, and they really support teaching in the classroom. They're in the classroom, they're they're. You know, I kind of describe it as they're a teacher, they're also a teacher of teachers. And they support our teachers in improving their instruction.
And I also say that, just an anecdote to this, that they really are catalysts for making sure we're articulating between the grades and between the levels. So between the middle school and the high school, and this board really felt that was really imperative. And they've been instrumental in doing that job. Thank you.
And that's one of the key parts is that they are in both buildings and they're they're able to help with that vertical alignment that we want to see. You know, throughout the district. Does that give you a better idea as to what they do? Beverly?
She's muted.
Okay, I'm sorry. When they teach, are they high school teachers or middle school teachers?
High school. Right now, they're part of the high school schedule, yeah.
Okay, so the other part of this salary is under on the teaching line?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. My question, I think, is a Ken question. I see on the total salaries and wages, we're up 2.1%. And on in total employee benefits, we're up 110%. Somehow, could you explain that to me?
Yeah, the the allocation for group insurance did not happen across here, so it's been corrected in our in our final version. But your 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 benefits number is a little messed up on our on our individual. Functions, but in total, the 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 benefits number is appropriate. So I'm going to ask you to to try and ignore the 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 group insurance number on the function level until we get the final version.
Thanks a lot, Ken.
Sorry.
Bev, do you have another que- oh, wait. I need Rita.
Yes, so which union are there? They are then, these people are in the administrators' union? As opposed to the teaching because they're only teaching. At one time, the curriculum coordinators were considered teachers and they were in the teachers' union because it was 6040. So what is it now? What is the percentage?
They're the admin union, correct?
They are, and they have some summertime work because a lot of the curriculum work goes in the summer, so they have a few extra days that brings them into the administrator. Plus, they're evaluating teachers, which was really a great concern at the high school and middle school level that there were so, especially with the G Plan, there was so much to do around that.
So will this 9%? Increase, will that be offset when you redo the benefits?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it won't be that high.
Actually, it's, I've done it already. It is 1.9%, so it's.
Thank you.
Dean?
I withdraw. Sorry.
No. I'm going to do Andrea.
Okay, I heard Phil say that the the curriculum coordinators did informal observations. But now I hear that they're they're evaluating and I just I just want clarity on that.
Yeah, they do both. They do both. I didn't mean to, I guess I misspoke, but it's informal informal observations, depending on what level, you know, what where the teacher is in the in the program.
Okay, thank you.
Before I recognize Bev again, is there anyone else from the board? Okay, Bev?
Can you please explain on the administration line 105, FY22, it says 71. $71,800 and FY23, it went up to $93,000. Why the change there? And that's, can you please explain that for me?
Yeah, I can explain that. So this that position, the student data manager, we did have an offset this year with the SIR. SIR2, and actually, there is an offset next year, but it's it's a different amount, so it's being offset by by some grant funds. And it was offset more this year than it is going to be next year.
So this isn't his real salary? Is his real salary higher than the 93,000?
Correct.
Which is real salary?
I. I don't think I have that right here. I can't.
Yeah, that's something we have to get from HR and that would be if we could, you know, do that, not in a public meeting. It's dealing with someone's. Are public. Well, I know, but I'm just saying that I think.
Right, right. I know what you mean, but they're all they're all public.
Any other questions on this page? If not, let's move on.
The next page, 580, is our diversity, equity and inclusion. It's worth noting that the program description listed there is our our mission statement for our DEI work. And it's also worth noting at the tops, the stipend for coordination of diversity, equity, inclusion has been funded by. The ARPESR grant for the upcoming year. Moving down. We see the stipend for the position, and again. Ken, I want to make sure I'm saying this right. It was placed, if you see it under FY22, as $15,000. That was later paid for by ARPESR. We didn't have that at the time the budget was made, so it was placed there. And then. To instructional improvement and professional materials, which you'll see that total, the 11.6 and the 3.4. Equal that $15,000. So that's where that money is going and the stipend, the position will again be. Paid for by the ARPESR grant. The instructional improvement services and the professional materials are similar to what I spoke of before in terms of any. Any supplies needed within the building, textbooks needed, you know, we've used that to purchase materials for the for the libraries in terms of diversifying our. Our classroom libraries and our school libraries. So that explains just that difference from the 15 to zero. And then from the zero under the line 322 to 11,600 and then line number 690 from 0 to 3,400. So explains the increases there. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah.
I've said it a few times in my head. I think I think it makes sense.
Are there any questions? If not.
I have a question. I'm sorry. So line 322 instructional improvement, that whole $11,600 is going for library books?
No, that could be used for for a number of different things. I know we've purchased books for teachers in terms of the district wide. Read that we've talked about a number of times at the at the board meetings and in around cultural responsive teaching. And then anything the schools deem. That they're moving, pushing towards the program mission to diversify and educate the staff.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no more, no more questions on that, let's move ahead.
The next session, again, no FTEs in this section. This budget, you know, supports the new instruction materials, support materials for teachers, professional resources, curriculum development, which we'll see in more detail down on 583. So we'll see down here, a lot of the top line item is 101 is used for curriculum work. And professional development and prep time for workshops that we, you know, we do when teachers are are. We're doing some in-house trainings, so we give them time to prep, to prepare their materials and their instruction for teachers. The. The workman's comp and social security and Medicare. And the graduate credit course, that's all part of the teacher's contract in terms of. The only one that we haven't seen in other sections is the graduate credit course where we pay a percentage. And again, that's according to their contract that they're pursuing higher degrees. Line 321 instructional services, that's what provided to the students. That line item, it's worth noting, the next few line items are driven by the school site budgets as well, which explains the larger totals. Again, that's all the. You know, this is the element, like, for instance, that $19,100, $14,600 of that is is the elementary. Budgets split amongst the elementary schools. So again, those line, that line item is driven by the Skype, the the school site budgets. Instructional improvement services, that's again for teachers. You know, that's that's instructional improvement for teachers as well, and that is also driven by the the school's budget, what they want to provide to provide professional development for their teachers. The district travel, 584, again, driven by site budgets, that's separated for the, you know, that's in a total for all of the district. In terms of, and we do, we do, obviously, over the last couple of years, that workshops have have not been in person, they've been online. We 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 assume a percentage of those workshops moving forward will will maintain, will remain online, but a large number of them will also be in person. And so we'll involve some travel. And and again, those of you who have taken part, you know, we do believe, just like, just like for the kids. I think the true learning comes from being in person and having that conversation and that collegiality. There is a value to the online stuff and the virtual stuff because it's easier, more people can attend. But there are some things that will require travel. We do expect that to to increase as we continue to move forward. Line 612 is the computer software. Again, worth noting, a large portion of our computer software budget is paid for by SIR2, 150,000 of that. What's left is what's in this budget here. I also want to note that one part of the job that I got when I first came here was to sit down with Tom Lonsdale and take a look at all the instructional computer software. That we've put in since since COVID hit. And as you can imagine, as we move forward and as the kids return to school, there are areas that we can now pull back. So so one of our tasks was to look at the software. See what was, you know, there's a number of softwares that were just strictly for for the virtual learning, which we're not learn, which we're not using anymore. We also took a look at the usage data, which which we have access to for all the different softwares that we purchased. We could see who's using it. Which buildings are using it, and we made some decisions that we were able to cut just under 90,000. In this first year, as we return to in-person learning, this is something that we continue to monitor and that Tom and I will keep an eye on. In in terms of additional cuts that we can make. And again, a lot of it is is based on usage. We want to see what the kids are using, what the teachers are using, what they find valuable. And we did also use teacher input as well. We did a survey of of teachers to find out what they what they wanted us to keep, what we could do away with, and we could use that information as well to make those decisions. So we're continually looking at that and seeing how we can. How we can pull back and hold on to the things that are most valuable for the for the teachers and, of course, more importantly, for the kids. The line items for 628 food supplies, that's the food that we supply for orientation and convocation and the various professional developments. We usually provide some some light refreshments for that and professional materials, again, could be could be books. It could be. Any kind of materials that we use for for our professional developments, our convocation, our orientation, that sort of thing. And then the dues and fees, that's going. Down to zero, I believe those have been placed in another. You know, that was on an earlier page, so so that was a move from this line item. Any questions on all of that?
Matt?
I have no problem with anything I'm seeing in software. I'm just trying to be mindful that after FY24. We're not going to have ARPESR funds available, and I'm looking at the growth from 45,000 to 66,000 on 612. And I don't expect any hard numbers, but are you projecting similar increases over the next couple of years? What do we, what's our blue sky on this?
I might be able to give you a little bit of background on the on the 40. 45,000, so that that's impacted by, we had both SIR, SIR2 funds as well as some alliance funds that offset this year. So. So I think that number actually, it was was a little bit larger because we were coming off of last year's virtual learning. So I don't, I don't think you can draw an inference from the 45 to the 66 and necessarily think that's that's how it's going to bump up. So that's just a little bit of background on where that 45,000 comes from.
Thank you.
Beverly?
Thank you. A lot of, a lot of the stuff in this budget is being funded by the the grants. And like Matt said, a lot of the grants are going to end in 2024. Is it possible, I'm asking this now because I don't want to forget about asking it, to get a list of all? Is it possible, I'm asking this now because I don't want to forget about asking it, to get a list of all the things that are funded by grants? And tell us. What we want to carry over after, what we're gonna have to pay for after these grants run out? And how much that's gonna cost us? So say we're paying for software now with grant money. In twen- after twenty twenty-four, do we still want to pay for this? Out of our budget and how much is that gonna cost us? So at all the things that we're paying for at the grants now. What do with the Susan really think we're going to need after these grants run out? And what is that gonna cost us? I want to know that. I don't need to know that now, but I'd like to know that soon.
It's a good question, and that's part of the reason why we're doing this very thorough ad- audit. Not just one year. We did it last year, we're doing it this year, and we'll do it next year. So we can really hone in to those valuable um resources, softwares that prove to us. That we're closing a gap and that kids are benefiting from this. And so I think that's a really excellent question, and we do have several charts and graphs that we monitor. Um, through Lori's office with staffing and Ken's office. Um, the story of the three SRS was one indication of what we've been doing over time, but we'd be happy to just talk about that. One time, that's a really valuable um way to look at it and one that we look at trends so we can identify. How do we sustain what we're doing? Thank you.
And will you have dollars, dollar signs with um like, say, you hired three social workers? And you paid for them under the S T A grant or whatever grant? Do you still want those social workers when the grants run out? And how much, and if you do, how much is that gonna cost the Board of Education?
Yep.
That's that's the stuff I want to know.
And we need to know what the money, the dollar sign shows us. You're right. Yep.
Can you get that to us? And I, you know, maybe not next week, but okay.
We will do that. Thank you.
I'm I'm just trying to look ahead here.
Yeah, I know. I'm doing that all the time. I'm looking in my rearview mirror and I'm looking forward at the same time. Thank you.
Any other questions for this? All right. I think we're done with support services, staff, general support. Is that correct?
Yep.
Who? All right, so we are now. We're gonna go to ninety-four, right?
Yes. And Sam's on.
Right, all right, let me pull it up here. Here. Oops. There. All right. Ninety-four, um, so I'll 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 give a little um synopsis for Sam can um um uh share as well, but.
Can we make it a little bigger?
Yeah, um, let's see.
I don't know if I have a full screen. That that just might be.
This is five dash nine four. Um, this is the operation, the maintenance uh function uh twenty-five ten. Uh, you'll see for FTEs, we have um. We have a uh director of building and grounds. Uh, we have a total of thirty-nine uh custodial uh personnel. Uh, throughout the uh district uh by building, and then we also have some district-wide uh custodial staff and a supervisor. Uh, thirty-nine, that's the same number that we had uh uh this year, we're proposing for next year. Uh, there are thirteen uh. Uh, positions within maintenance uh group, there's a maintenance supervisor and twelve uh twelve uh maintenance uh. Uh, workers and then one one admin assistant. And just a note on uh changes, uh notes and changes for this this coming year is that we did convert the telephone system. Uh, from the uh from the uh the the old system to a voiceover internet system. Uh, and so therefore we've moved all the cost for telephones uh to computer support services. Uh, so you'll notice when we go through this uh that there are no uh charges for uh telephone system in this function. We'll go down five dash nine five. Uh, this this particular function goes over two pages because of so many lines. Uh, but a five dash nine five, uh you'll see under salaries, uh we have those same positions that we spoke of. Uh, the custodial maintenance group are covered by uh union and those increases are uh per their contract. Um, we have uh custodial and maintenance, so we have overtime uh for the time that they have to uh uh do extra work. Uh, which unfortunately, when it snows, they do a lot of extra work. Here we have uh the group insurance and employee benefits, an increase of one point four percent. Uh, line three three one is professional services. These are services that um. Uh, like I think Mystic Air Quality uh is one of the, one of the uh professional services that we utilize. Uh, we are uh proposing a two and a half percent increase uh on on that. Uh, you'll notice for FY twenty-two, actual the fifty thousand to fifty, that includes uh the um. The study review plans for the field house. That's why it's extra high uh there. Uh, but we don't anticipate that will uh repeat. Uh, under the four hundreds, uh we have purchased property services. These are services that uh we uh contract out for. Uh, you'll see water, sewer, garbage removal. Those are like one percent increases. Uh, for inflation, snow removal, we're keeping it at the fifty thousand dollars. We're hoping that we've had some really good um. Um, experience over the past couple of years, we're hoping that continues. Uh, last year, we spent twenty-seven thousand. Um, we're hoping that uh we spend uh, you know, the less than the fifty, but we're um. Uh, keeping that number in there just in case. Um, repairs uh that and you have a lot of repairs, uh painting. Uh, so total for pro- purchased property services, an increase of a half a percent over last year's budget. Then we're gonna skip down to five dash nine um seven. We're gonna skip uh that one page. And uh the top of this page is liability insurance, uh five two two. Uh, so we did build in a ten percent increase uh because we knew that the newer buildings uh have a higher value and therefore are. Cost uh more money to ensure. Uh, we did uh have a discussion with the town. In which we were informed that uh we're going to have to uh increase this uh uh even more uh that um. The school buildings now because of these, these three new buildings uh in their values where. We're representing almost sixty percent of the total uh portfolio of uh properties. Uh, that the insurance company uh ensures. Uh, so uh we need to pick up a bigger piece of that of that liability insurance, uh property insurance. Uh, telephone, you'll notice is zero, as discussed before, this is um uh been uh charged over to the computer um. Uh, function uh twenty-five forty, which is coming up. Uh, so overall, for uh these purchase services actually shows that as a negative uh three point five. Uh, percent, but we have, we're gonna have to increase this, uh if you get the number, but there was a number that the town gave us that we have to increase uh our costs for. Uh, under supplies, uh you'll see electricity uh is actually pretty much the same as uh this year. That's because we're going to remove uh three buildings from our portfolio that we have to uh electrify. Uh, and so we are uh, we're estimating that it's gonna be about the same amount of money for next year as it is for this year. Uh, there are more uh natural gas uh heated buildings uh in in the in the group now, so there is an increase there over this year. Uh, and but a decrease in the fuel oil, the the heating oil that's used, uh because we have less buildings that that require that uh that fuel. Um, there is an increase under custodial supplies. Uh, past couple of years, we did have a surplus of supplies. Uh, that we were able to utilize, but the what we, those supplies are 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 being used up, and so we anticipate next year. Uh, needing uh hundred sixty-four eight oh two. Overall, for supplies, it's a one and a half percent increase of the last year's budget. Uh, we did put ten thousand dollars under line seven three one, which is replacement of non-instructional equipment. Uh, this could be uh uh, you know, floor scrubbers, uh any any sort of equipment, uh you know, piece of equipment that has a life of more than one year. Um, and so there is an amount of ten thousand dollars in there, which is the amount we spent this year actually on some equipment. Uh, and then some dues um um for, I don't remember the name of the organization, but I know Sam does, so. I will stop the sharing. Oh, so overall for this group, uh operation and maintenance, a one point four percent increase over last year, ninety-two thousand dollars, two hundred thirty-nine.
Kim? I have a question. Maybe I should know this um, you can, but you help me understand clothing allowance. Yes.
Uh, that is uh, that is in there in the contract actually, and it's um um, it's like uh, like. Um, I don't know exactly what they are, to be honest, but uh 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 workshirts, Sam, you can probably answer this better than I can.
Who knows?
Yeah, it would be for any uh safety uh supplies that the in- an individual might want. It might be safety shoes. Could be uh safety glasses uh along those lines.
I guess no one could hear me because I was muted. I'm really sorry. Matthew, do you have a question? And I recognize Beverly after that.
Thank you. I see that uh, I know not all electricity is for heating. Maybe not any, but our utilities are about a million and a half dollars. At least for the propane and fuel oil, I'm hoping you'll tell me that we participate in some kind of intermunicipal purchasing agreement.
Um, actually, yeah, for for next year, we are planning on um, uh there is a a consortium of uh of uh of um. Um, uh of municipalities uh that we will participate with in regards to fuel oil and diesel oil. Uh, for electricity and propane, uh we we actually um. Uh, join with the town um and uh purchase together um to to you, you know, uh. Uh, to to get get the best price, uh but we're we're not necessarily uh, you know, in a outside of the town at this point.
Thank you.
Beverly?
Um, can you explain um account one thirty-eight? Maintenance temp, no custodial temp, I'm sorry. Uh, is that like when somebody calls out sick, you somebody comes in to take their place? Can you explain that to me, please?
So we we do have a a number of uh part-time uh custodians that we do call in on on a temporary basis. Um, and that that would get charged to that line versus the 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 folks that are there that come in on a regular schedule, yes. And sometimes we just need extra help, and so we would, we would charge this uh uh this uh this line. But it's it's all part-time uh custodial um.
So do you call them in when your full-time custodians call out sick?
Call out sick or we need extra extra hands uh to to help with whatever uh needs to get done.
How's the attendance in this uh department? Is the attendance pretty good?
I'll let Sam answer that one.
Attendance could always be better.
I would have to say, though, during a pandemic, everybody's attendance has been a little off, you know, we've been having. Um, positive cases, especially with this Omicron um recently. And um, so, you know, I think that that has impacted our kids, our teachers, our employees, so. Um, we're, we're getting through this and um hope to see a better day when people aren't getting sick and taking days off like that.
So before the pandemic, it wasn't this high, it was much lower, I take it.
I do see we've seen a spike or an increase with attendance issues because of um illness or um exposure. And, you know, we have real safeguards in place for people when they come back and how they need to stay out. So I think that has made an impact, but like Sam says, I guess we always hope it gets better for everybody, you know, it can be better.
It's also true that uh throughout the entire pandemic, uh the maintenance custodial staff were in. On a daily basis, and we had only one issue uh with a positive case during that whole time up until. The schools came back full-time, so uh and and the ones that we've had recently have been mild cases, which we're all thankful for.
Okay, well, thank you. I just was wondering, like, prior to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. That this line item was lower than the one hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. So I'll I'll look at that and see for myself. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Love a comment. If we want, um, I'm just, I I just hope we all can, you know, have a mandate in our schools to keep wearing masks and having everyone stay safe.
I agree.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, let's keep it to the budget.
That is part of the budget. That's, I was addressing the absences due to the um, the um, all the pandemic. We might have had more.
All right, any more questions? If not, let's move on to transportation.
Okay, on page five dash nine eight, this is a pupil transportation function two five two zero. Uh, for FTEs, we do have two clerical um personnel that work in the transportation office. Um, and we do have uh eighteen, a little under eighteen and a half um aides uh that work on uh the uh the buses. Um, there are no um changes uh over now, or last year. To note. Um, here on five dash nine nine, you'll see the expenses, uh we get the cost for the clerical and the school uh bus aides. Uh, that's a four point um three percent increase. Um, I believe the aides were uh did get an increase over last year um due to the um. Uh, the review of the minimum wage um that's going, coming in, going into uh into effect during this fiscal year. Um, employee benefits up uh two point eight percent. Uh, but the 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 dollars in this particular function are under um other purchase services. Five ten and five eleven, these are the buses that are contracted uh from STA. Uh, we do have uh one more year left in the current contract with STA. It'll go through um uh through the end of FY twenty-three. Uh, there's a three percent increase um in that, in the contracted rate. Uh, five ten are the are the longer buses, five eleven are the are the the shorter um, the shorter ones. Uh, five twelve, this is special ed transportation um that uh that we utilize. This is mainly curtain um that's uh the 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 smaller uh vans and uh. And getting students uh not not so much in a bus, but more on a uh local level. Uh, so overall, for other purchase services, a two point nine percent increase being driven by that STA contract. Uh, and then uh under supplies, uh the fuel for school buses, uh we. Are proposing a seven point seven percent increase due to the increase uh in the cost of fuel. Uh, so overall, for pupil transportation, a hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollar increase or three point one percent.
Rita?
I um, I had a question um about the bus aids. The increase is over a hundred thousand dollars from the year ago. To this budget and then projected for even more for following year. Could you tell me why?
We didn't utilize many of the uh, we didn't do as many um uh bus aids uh during the FY twenty-one uh year. Uh, there was just a um. That there, the, there were less uh buses and there were were less aids to uh to actually um take those positions.
Um. I'd add that we were not in full in-person. We had that hybrid model. So we had fewer kids taking the bus and, you know, on a daily basis, so that.
It'd be interesting to see what it was then, the year before that, if you.
Yeah, we could look back.
Yeah.
Also of note is that twenty thousand dollars or nineteen thousand plus uh for the um. Uh, for the bus aids, the increase in the bus aids at nineteen thousand dollars, uh bus aids. uh, for the bus aids, the increase in the bus aids at $19,000, uh, bus aids have been paid, uh, 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 thirteen dollars and 60 cents for about the last seven years. And so with this, uh, raise that they just got recently to bring them up to minimum wage, uh, that's why that number's, uh, looks pretty large, but, uh, certainly well, well worth it.
And we really haven't always been able to fill those positions, so we're looking to, because the special ed buses that, and the buses that require them, um, really require them and we really need them on the bus. So we did get good news though, that they are, um, in some of our negotiating with the bus company over, you know, lots of different things in the beginning of the year, the challenges that we were facing. One of the things that both Sam and I brought to their attention was it was imperative that we had new cameras on these buses. Oftentimes when we were looking into an incident, they would say the, the old cameras were corrupted and that wasn't a good enough answer. So they did put in, um, I think at least a dozen in the beginning of the year and we came back to them and said, it's still not good enough, we really need them in all of our vehicles. And I think over this weekend, the shipment came in and they were putting them in and I couldn't be happier. Sam, do you have any more information on that?
Yeah, they, uh, they started making sure that all of our special needs buses got the cameras first and they will finish up installing all the cameras in all of our buses by Wednesday.
And this was their, their cost that they, the company took on. I think, and I'm just very appreciative.
So the reimbursement that, um, we receive for bus transportation per student, does that go directly to the town?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, for, for transporting the magnet students.
Right.
Yeah, directly to the town.
Definitely to the town, okay.
Beverly?
We must have that in our pie chart, Ken.
Yeah.
As what is, you know, the, the monies that support the town budget that go directly to the town.
Beverly?
Thank you, uh, fuel for the school buses, do they go to a gas station or do they fuel up at the site? Where the buses are located?
Yeah, the, the STA has a tank at, uh, the bus garage. Um, however, it's a tank and it hasn't been approved by the town fu- uh, fire marshal and building official yet. So they, uh, the buses that do use, uh, gasoline have been going down to the local gas station and only charging us the same rate that we're paying for the fuel.
Okay, thank you, my other question is, um, how do you determine what the cost of student transportation is? Like when you're negotiating a contract like five, 12 and five, 11 and five, 10, what do you base the price on for student transportation? Is it how many students you, um, you carry on the bus and the bus aid, uh, uh, specifically, how do you calculate that?
We, we pay, we pay an amount, uh, per bus per day, so we have a daily bus rate. Um, it's actually the same for, for, for either size, uh, bus. Uh, and so that rate that we pay, that includes both the usage of the bus as well as the, uh, personnel to, to drive it as well as personnel at the, at the, uh, at the box, uh, depot that, um, that coordinates everything. So we, we pay a daily, a daily rate. Uh, so that calculation, the number that you see there is the number of buses times 181 days times our rate.
What, what is your rate? News is, can I add this Beverly, the good news is that it's from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So our after, within Groton, whether it's field trips or, you know, the middle of the day runs for our preschools or our after-school tutoring or after-school, um, sports, you know, getting kids home, late buses, those all are the same price tag, we don't pay extra for that. It's only when we cross the bridge or we go to another town that we might have to pay additional monies for that.
Well, they've also done, uh, field trips to, uh, Mystic Seaport and a few other places that are, uh, close by that they haven't charged us for additional.
Right, and I think the Guard Theater in New London, so they've done a few of those as well, so they have done some kind things to, in-kind things.
Okay, oh, that's nice, that's good of them, uh, how much do we pay per day for the buses?
Our rate for 2023 is 36671.
Does it go by the size of the bus or the small buses cost as much as the larger buses?
Yeah, they cost the same, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Beverly, I, I really appreciate your questions because this is something that we have been looking at because it's a five-year contract for us. And so the fact that you're asking all these questions helped remind us is about, sort of like where we are in the contract and how much it does cost, so I am appreciative of your inquiry.
One more question, online five, 12, um, the other, how much do, do they pay that you check, they've charged 366, $366.71 a day too?
No, the, this, this is curtain, um, uh, transportation, and so those are really, uh, 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 by, by trip. So depending on how far they have to go, uh, you know, a lot of those are, um, some of those anyhow are students going out of district that we, uh, we utilize curtain for or picking up, um, um, uh, I think we also pick up, uh, those that are homeless with, uh, with curtain. So they are in town, but, but those are dependent upon the number of miles, not, uh, it's not a, it's not a flat fee.
And, and some of those routes are, are very long, go to the other end of the state.
Right.
Thank you.
Dean?
I'd feel warmer and fuzzier if the bus actually picked my daughter up this morning. Uh, whatever bus was assigned to the route picked up everybody except kids in our neighborhood, so not all the bugs have been ironed out. We had a pretty good run for a while, but I don't know what's going on, sorry, off budget, but.
No, just make sure though, the information gets to Sam or our staff here so that they can follow up. It's really important that we are on it all the time, I found out, I've discovered.
Yeah, I think, I think it was labeled as bus 20 and for some reason bus 20, according to my wife, bus 20 did not find its way into our, our neighborhood this morning.
Yeah, I like to follow up on those things.
Will do. Thank you.
Liz?
Thanks, Ken, um, I just wanted to clarify, please. Ken, what's the price of a bus? Is it $366 or is it 3,660 some doll per bus?
$366.71 per day, per.
Per day, okay, I, I had the wrong number down, I wanted to clarify, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Little bit of a difference between that 300.
Just a tad, that's why I put my hand up.
Jay?
Uh, so Ken, um.
Wendell Gaston and Scott Co-Patrick, Gaston said interview tomorrow morning with Michael Barnett. With Brian Peter.
That's fun, thank you.
Um, that's why I always mute myself between conversations. So, um, Ken, in, in previous years, you have, I, I guess you've, um, locked in the price of the bus fuel, because basically our, our expense, you're paying STA, the daily rate, that includes the bus, the maintenance, the drivers, the insurance, this, um, uh, the cameras, and then we purchase the fuel. And so you're still locking that in, uh, in advance?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And just as an example, how, how far is it locked?
Oh, uh, we're, we're locked till the end of, end of the, um, uh, fiscal year, so June 30.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing no more, we are going to go to technology.
All right, here we are in technology five dash 100, we made it to three digits. Um, let's see, this is function 2540, computer support services. Uh, you'll see at the top, we have, uh, FTEs, we have a director of IT. Uh, under technicians, we have a network administrator, a system administrator, and we have, um, six, uh, computer technicians, uh, that are, um, I guess ones that, uh, central office and the others are in the school buildings. Uh, and admin assistant. Uh, I'll note again that, um, the, uh, some change over last year, uh, we converted to a voice-over-internet, um, telephone system. And so all the costs for that telephone system are now, um, I, uh, classified under, under this function code. Uh, five dash 101, uh, we have the, uh, salaries and wages, uh, for the FTEs we just spoke of. Uh, you'll notice a decrease in technicians, we did have, uh, two longstanding, um, technicians retire over this past year. Uh, and, um, uh, we replaced them, uh, there, they have, uh, steps, and so we replaced, uh, them with, uh, folks on the lower step. Uh, so overall for salaries and wages, it's a $5,000 increase or 0.6%. Uh, employee benefits, um, insurance, workers' comp, social security, um, $1,480 or 0.9% increase. Uh, line 331, professional services, um, we utilize, uh, a, a company to help us with our E-rate, uh, that's a, that's a discount. Uh, and we utilize a, a company that takes care of that, uh, and I think that's what drives that, uh, that $9,455, uh, cost. Uh, line 343, our computer network services, this is everything to get the, uh, internet in and around the district. Um, there is a 15,710 dollar increase in that line. Overall for purchase services, uh, is, uh, a 6.1% increase. Online for 30, uh, repair of equipment, um, we have a budget of 25,000, uh, decrease of 4,000 over last year, this year's budget, uh, rentals, other 441, uh, this is, uh, this is our, this is our copiers, uh, that are, uh, throughout the system, uh, throughout the district. Uh, they are, uh, all networked together, so, uh, teacher can print off, off any copier within the district. Um, and we, um, we have a, a reduction of $7,866 overall for purchased property services. It's a 10.1% decrease. Uh, line 530 telephone, uh, you'll see it looks like a big increase in previous years, uh, we would capture just the cellphone, um, uh, program here, but now we're capturing the entire telephone, um, both cell phones and the, uh, and the new VoIP system. Uh, so it's 91,400, it shows a $69,390 increase, uh, but it was reduced out of, uh, uh, the operations budget, that we already looked at. Uh, so overall for other purchase services, it's, it's an increase of 70,000, uh, but there is an offset in the different function. Uh, under supplies, we have, uh, a decrease of, um, 39,500 under computer supplies, this is mainly driven by, in the past, before we had this, uh, copier, network copier, uh, solution, we had, uh, HP printers, uh, those little, uh, one-off printers, uh, throughout the district, uh, that we, that we leased, we no longer lease those, so, uh, uh, we have a reduction under, you know, computer supplies. Uh, computer software, 122,880, uh, decrease of 85, 85, we are, uh, supplementing this, uh, with the DOD, uh, supplemental impact aid as we did, uh, for this year. Um, overall for supplies, it's, uh, a reduction of $50,087 or 22%. And under equipment, uh, we have 21,500, again, this is being supplemented by the, um, by the DOD supplemental impact aid, uh, but as far as what's getting charged to this budget, it's, uh, very similar to the prior year, a reduction of $789, uh, overall, computer support services, an increase of 24,409 or 1.6%.
So I'm gonna recognize Matt and then Jay, and also just say hi to Clint, welcome.
Hello everyone.
Um, I seem to remember that there was some discussion of moving from a, uh, computer and software lease format, I mean, purchase format to a lease format, uh, I don't see capital expenses for technology here, are they somewhere else?
So, uh, Matthew, the reason you don't see that is, uh, the leasing laptop program that I presented to, uh, month, multiple versions of the Board of Ed and Committee and then, uh, a COW meeting that is coming from DOD funds, and that's why you see quite a considerable decrease in kind of the 730 through 736, the total equipment line. So that, the, that is coming out of DOD funds.
I think then in terms of the budget narrative, then that might be a useful place to point out that we're affecting some savings by doing XYZ that just make a robust narrative to answer the board's RTM and town council's questions before they ask them.
And that goes to Beverly's point, which is what are we, what are we purchasing with grants?
Thank you very much.
I also think we sent out a chart in board notes too, that addressed how we're kind of spending down our, but with, with resp- with responsible, you know, spending down, um, those DOD supplemental funds.
Yep.
But I agree, the narrative is a good other place to put it there, just to, you know, remind us and show the public, thank you.
Jay?
Now, I know when, um, we invested in the new voice-over IP system, it wasn't completely to save money, but it was that we had an archaic system, calls were not being completed in and out of buildings, between buildings. Uh, so that all had to be modernized, um, just from that aspect, but if we're looking at line 530, does this still include any equipment or has, has everybody now been tied in to the voice-over IP system?
So this does not include equipment, but the handsets that come with all VoIP lines, Jay, are included in our regular service that we pay out front here, so that was question number one. Question number two, we are not fully complete, we were delayed in some of the VoIP installs because if you recall, the switches that were slated, the 26 switches that were slated for the two new river schools, uh, were not available for the start of school, so we took the switches that were dedicated to the VoIP project, had those installed so that we could start the year off in those two river schools. Uh, those remaining 26 switches have been coming in, we have now taken possession of them, uh, and we have, uh, three schools, excuse me, four schools remaining. We're doing CK, uh, uh, next week on the 15th. Uh, so we are mid-stream with that now that we have those switches in hand, uh, and we're trying to be very careful when we're actually flipping the switch, so to speak, uh, because we have to be careful with, obviously with students in the buildings, teachers in the buildings and so forth, we cannot bring a phone system down. So we've been looking for opportunities during half-days, breaks and so forth, get everything in, installed, ready to go, and then flip the switch, so to speak.
So now these handsets that you're, you're talking about, is this something we're paying for every year?
This is, that's included in the monthly charges for, uh, each of the VoIP lines.
Okay, and so this, this figure includes all the cell phones in the district, the, the voice-over IP, the handsets, and then of course, we're still paying local exchange carriers for when you dial nine, you're still obviously gonna have to interconnect.
Well, we do have, uh, we do have quite a few analog lines still in all of our buildings. These are things such as, uh, elevator connections, alarms, uh, we do still have some fax lines around and so forth. So yes, there are analog lines that are separate from the new VoIP system, uh, that we are maintaining in a minimal fashion.
But, um, uh, would you say then that this, this number is, is the, is going to be pretty stable, because you're saying it doesn't include any of the upgrades that was paid for, it's just they weren't delivered?
Yeah, no, we, yeah, this, we, this does not and will, it will not include things like switch upgrades and so forth, that has been covered. So yeah, I, I, I would imagine unless we see, uh, unless we see any additional building projects across the district, uh, or, or any other major demographic changes, this should be very stable. Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna recognize Beverly and then Rita, please.
Okay, online, um, account 105, administration, does that mean that this person is getting a $10,000 raise?
This, this is, this is our director of, of IT, um, we, um, we did get.
We did not have a full year last year. He came to us later in the year.
I don't understand.
So
Is, are they getting a a ten thousand dollar raise?
No, no, he wasn't. He he was not in place for a full year last year, so that indicates the salary that we had for this past year.
Okay.
Which wasn't a full year.
Okay. Thank you.
Rita, please.
Yes, my question um is for Clint. With six computer technicians, do you feel that that is adequate for our seven schools? Does that meet the needs of the teachers and the students?
Uh so to be very clear, those six technicians are part of the bargaining unit and that includes our power school administrator. So it's five technicians that are spread out throughout the schools. Uh and then that sixth person who is our power school administrator, who is also uh qualified. Uh she is an educational technology specialist, so she will flex into not necessarily the traditional break fix, but a lot of the integration efforts that we'll do working with teachers and so forth to integrate technology with the staff. Um uh it's a fair question. Um I think part of the reason why I've been a very strong supporter of this idea of leasing laptops uh is we've seen um rotten public schools obviously push, it had a one-to-one program, excuse me, at the high school prior to pandemic. Grotton Public Schools has gone one-to-one across the board and actually in many ways, two-to-one at the elementary level where we were providing devices for students at home as well as in the classroom. Um uh the plan is to continue a one-to-one fashion, but post-pandemic, we would need to increase funding to keep a two-to-one environment. So that is a prelude to saying if we are with these laptop upgrades, I'm comfortable with the level of technician support because I'm now having modern laptops, not as we talked about, anything from one to nine or ten years old with sixteen different varieties. I'm trying to baseline, so we have a single model that's new and that we have a regular refresh cycle, which then does take a lot of those support needs off of those technicians that are in the building. So when we do things like that, in addition to um wonderful new networks at three new schools, those do start to help pull back some of the needs. But then it also does shift in a way because we're gonna take all those teacher laptops and paraprofessional laptops and so forth that we have in the field now and refurbish those so that they can be used for instructional purposes with students, you know, where appropriate. We're not probably gonna do that with the nine and ten-year-old laptops, but certainly anything that's within the last four or five years or newer. There's value in those. We turn them into Chromebooks and those can be used for stretching purposes.
That's great. Thank you.
Beverly, do you have another question?
Sorry, you couldn't hear me now right now.
Anything else?
Kim, if I may, I'm sorry. I'm looking at Bev and Rita here and so forth, and it really was uh interesting to take a deep dive into this budget. Last time I did it was uh two thousand and four as a board member, so there's a few things that have changed in the interim. But uh uh I appreciate it and I'm I'm excited to get through this and 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 do a lot of these upgrades that this board has been supporting over the last couple of years and uh I'm gonna do my best to shepherd them through.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, if there are no other questions, can we move on to the miscellaneous?
Hi, sorry, I was unmuted. Uh five dash one oh two is uh function twenty-five sixty, health services for staff. Uh this is um notifications to provide it Friday to staff members uh and testing uh staff who may have been exposed to pathogens. Um we budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars here. Last year, we're we're suggesting the same. Uh la- uh in uh twenty twenty-one, uh we only spent two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh so I I think um I think that that amount should be more than enough. And I'm just gonna go on to the next one. On the top of five dash one oh four, this is non-public transportation. Uh this is um transportation to uh for the students that go to Sacred Heart. Um we are budgeting, I think it was two percent of our uh of our our bus uh cost um ninety-two thousand dollars plus uh forty-five fifty for the fuel for school buses. Uh it was a little bit less last year, uh but that's uh due to the um not being in full at the beginning of uh last year. So share.
And that's a mandate for us to pay for, right? Like, we don't necessarily have an option not to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
And and that's another one that's reimbursed to the town, correct?
Correct.
Any further questions about that? All right, guys, we did a great job on doing a budget workshop. Um and so we have one more agenda item. And Susan, before I pass that on to you, um I just wanted to say um thank you to Jay's leadership um at getting information for us for us to kind of take a look at in terms of the graduation. And so um I, so that, so there was a, so so to the whole board, the reason why we're having a conversation is that there has been a new mandate or as of two thousand, Jay, help me out here. Um two thousand and
Nineteen.
Nineteen, right. And so there is this wonder if the board needs to um set a graduation date. Is that correct? Like um so that we can have, but there is some, also some understanding about the interpretation of sort of what was happened on the legislature. So um I figured we should probably sooner than later, at least start to have a conversation. I don't say we have to go to a vote tonight, um but I do think that we needed to have a an open conversation about setting the two thousand uh twenty-two um uh graduation date. So that's where I'm at.
And I think I sent a calendar for the board to to kind of view, to see what the possibilities are for that one hundred and eightieth day versus the one hundred and eighty-first for students as well as the law that passed. Um in two thousand nineteen, um we have had conversation with CAPE which indicated that those hundred and eighty, eighty days had to occur, no matter what we said. But I've been trying to reach the State Department of Education to get more clarification on that. So I'm I'm still not firm on what to do. So I, Jay, you have your hand raised. Maybe you can help out.
So I wanna do, I'm gonna recognize um Jay and then Dean.
So I I reached out to Representative Chris Conley and asked her for the history of the bill that that passed in twenty nineteen um along with the legislative intent. And so she passed along to me the uh Office of Legislative Research Bill Analysis um which indicates that under current law, that they were speaking in twenty nineteen, a local or regional board of ed must wait until April first to set a firm high school graduation date that provides at least a hundred and eighty days of school. Prior to April first, the board may set a firm graduation date no earlier than the hundred and eighty-fifth day of school noted in the school calendar that the board adopted for that year. Now, this bill um uh seventy-two fifty-eight, which uh was effective July first, twenty nineteen, allows a board to establish at any time in the school year a firm graduation date no earlier than the one hundred and eightieth day of the board adopted school calendar for that year. And the bill also specifies that bills, that boards can set their calendars to begin any day before or after Labor Day, which was another restriction at one time. So uh it looks as though the legislative intent is that we can set the graduation date based on our original calendar. Um no earlier than the hundred and eightieth uh day, based on that calendar and that intervening snow days would not uh change the graduation date. So I'm not sure if the State Department of Ed has somehow modified the regulations. But this was legislative intent in twenty nineteen.
So the the actual um law that I sent you was also the twenty nineteen. And it's really an interpretation of language. So I got um then from CAPE on the phone and his understanding was that we had to get the hundred and eighty days in. Um I, you know, I couldn't get much more from that, but um, you know, I would think that you know, the State Department, if someone would call me back, could help with this. I just don't wanna set a date and then have to change it on people either.
No, I agree, but I mean, parents, you know, are asking.
I get that.
They they won't be able to set something. Um and you know, that was the intent of the legislature in twenty nineteen. Now, if something changed, uh I can't find it. Um and like I said, this this came from from Chris Conley. She also included all the transcripts from the House and the Senate on this, so it's pretty, pretty comprehensive. Um but anyway, so I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah.
Dean, I'm with, Dean and then Rita.
Yeah, thanks. Um the former statute before the the law and twenty, the change in twenty nineteen uh had more qualifications. It 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 did provide that you had to wait until af- after April first. It doesn't say, didn't say so in the statute, but the implication's very clear. They wanted to be clear of any winter events. Since we don't have any seismic events, I think it's just the snow that they were talking about. In twenty nineteen, they've stripped out language and it very clearly says that the hundred, we don't have to. It says the Board of Ed may. I'm not sure what, who else is gonna do this, but the Board of Ed may, but it has to wait. The graduation date can't be any earlier than the hundred and eightieth day that we originally set. I don't know why CAPE would say we have to have a hundred and eighty actual instructional. Now, mind you, I'm not advocating that we set it at the hundred and eighty-first day. I'm simply saying the statute says we are allowed to set the graduation date at any time, any date, as long as it's beyond the hundred and eighty days that we originally set. Now, it would be wise to take into account, if wanted to, snow days, actual projected, et cetera. But the statute's very clear, the hundred and eighty is the original hundred and eighty day period. And I would say that in reducing the language and removing the qualification, the legislature is really saying, hey, guys, if you want to, you can set the graduation date and ignore snow day. So you would, we could legitimately have by the statute uh graduation date that that uh that took place two days before the hundred and eightieth day if we wanted to, and that would be legal. So it's really simple, really straightforward English, as far as I'm concerned. If I were to rule on that, I I wouldn't look at the legislative history, frankly, unless there was some ambiguity in the language, and there isn't. So it's nice to talk about the history, but um if you wanted to bring the history in, I I'd argue that the history actually argues in favor of we can set any damn date we want, as long as it's beyond the original hundred and eighty days, period end. So now the question before us is, what would we like to set? Do we feel comfortable setting a date at this point? And what date would we like to set? So what's the original hundred and eightieth day or hundred and eighty-first day or whatever it is?
Well, the hundred, original hundred and eighty-first day, because that's what the board agrees to give students, although you can modify that to one hundred and eighty, um was originally the seventeenth. So on your calendar, you see that I've highlighted the twentieth and twenty-first as one hundred and eighty versus one hundred and eighty-one um at this point. You know, we tend to do, what's that?
Because of snow days? Is that why you did that? We've had how many?
Two.
We've had two.
Right.
So for our younger students or anybody, it it's really six twenty-one right now.
Yeah.
To have the hundred and eighty. So then we could set graduation for the um end of that week. The the, let's say the twenty-fourth, if people still wanna have it on a Friday, which is bitch as usual. I mean, I I'm all for, we've always set a graduation date and allowing for possible snow days. And whether or not we have the snow days or not, the graduation date stayed the same. So I feel we should set a graduation date.
I think you'd be safe in setting it on the Friday. Um, you know, but if you felt that you wanted an earlier date, um, you know, you could do that too. It sounds like.
It seems that though for um people that have relatives coming in, they always seem to want it on a weekend or close to the weekend. Um so I know the Navy community has always favored that. I'm I'm all for tonight setting a graduation date. I think it's the right thing to do.
Liz?
I'm with Rita. Um I'm gonna say too that, quite frankly, um I think the sixth, seventeenth, the original hundred and eightieth day was the grad, was the seventeenth. And let's face it, the seniors are ready and, you know, and, you know, the seventeenth would work. Um it's also would be the anniversary of my graduation from Fitch, but we won't go there um cuz it was back in the other century. But you know, the thing is, is that I really think I'm all for definitely um having graduation for seniors. Now, that does not mean that we can't, that the, it's just a small part of the population that will be graduated. And then if we have to fiddle shout the following week, we finish out the following week for the underclassmen. Um I don't see there's a problem there. And um speaking from experience, as my life as a high school teacher, um they're, they, they're ready to go. Let them fly, let the falcons fly, you know, it's it's time. And it's a, the seventeenth is, I think, the place that we need to look at. Thank you.
That's fine with me also. I agree with you. They're ready to go.
Ev?
I can agree on setting a graduation date tonight. The seventeenth or the twenty-fourth is fine with me. Um I I agree with Rita that for families, the twenty-fourth on a Friday is better, probably. If they're traveling, then they can stay for the whole weekend. They don't have to worry so much about days taken off from work. Um but it, either way is fine with me.
Kim?
The seventeenth is the way to go.
Jay?
I was just gonna mention, I know that uh Dean's not uh interested in the legislative intent or history. But one of the things they did mention um was that this allows uh folks that are report, reporting for uh military duty to graduate with their their classes, which sometimes a later graduation date um prevents. I don't know what those dates are off the top of my head, but the legislature specifically addressed that in their debates um is to make sure that that those students can graduate with their class and then still report um and other um uh you know, so so report uh for what they've committed to.
Ev, do you have another question? Um I, so Susan, uh um and Phil, can you talk to me a little bit? Um or talk to the board a little bit about what's the pluses of going to the seventeenth? What is the negatives in your, as an administrator, what are the negatives?
Well, I guess I would like to verify with the State Department. Uh you can vote on this either way, but um I think that COVID definitely had an impact, although last year, remember, they were very relaxed and gave us a hundred and seventy-seven days. But this year, you know, no remote learning. They put other legislators have put other things in place now because of COVID. So I just um, I don't wanna make a mistake on that, you know, if I, it does, it did sound to me that you had to cover the one hundred and eighty days that, but then you could set, you know, But then you could set, you know, you could set the date at any time. I agree with that. So it's a little confusing. And. You know. Cave was confused too, I think.
Um, Jay, before I recognize you, I'm going to recognize Matthew. But you need to be unmuted.
Thank you very much. Does Robert's rules allow us to authorize the superintendent to pick? Her choice of the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth, as she thinks is best suits the needs of the district?
I don't know if it's a Robert's rules thing. I think we can as a group make a decision about. You know, if we don't vote it, vote on it tonight and Susan can get more information and then we put that on an agenda for a vote for the following week. Does one week make a difference for people? And that's, I mean, that's up to the board. But I think I would much rather do that than to. I don't know, I don't, that's just my opinion, but I'm, I'm at the mercy of, of the other eight of us.
I would prefer the seventeenth to tell you the truth. So if the language is that. And the kids can graduate on the seventeenth, I agree. I mean, that was, that's kind of been what we've been doing lately. You know, that seventeenth date has popped up several times. I don't want to hold them for another whole week. You know, with a couple of snow days, but. I just want verification that they're not going to hold us, you know. In contempt at the state because they didn't get their hundred and eighty days in.
Jay?
Yeah, I was just going to simply suggest what, what you had said is there is no emergency for tonight. I mean, I, I do appreciate that we've been able to discuss it tonight. If we can put it on an agenda, I just don't want it to get lost. As, you know, it's sometime, as things sometimes do, and so if we could put it on for next Monday, once Susan's able to. You know, confirm that there isn't some strange regulation or emergency order. That has modified this statute that, you know, we're not aware of. So. I mean, I'd be fine with that.
You know. I'm going to recognize.
Next Monday.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm going to do Dean and then Matthew.
Thanks, I'll be brief. It's, it's not that I'm, it's not that I'm uninterested in the legislative history. I am casually. But strictly speaking, because I consider the statutory language to be very clear about what the hundred and eighty days. Means I would have no reason to go back into the legislative history. To divine what the meaning might be, what the legislative intent might have been. So it's. But again, it's educational, it's simply not necessary, I think, in view of the unambiguous language. And I would prefer the seventeenth over the twenty-fourth. I. We were all seniors once. I think we remember what we were doing the last couple of days, yeah.
Yeah.
I was studious.
Oh, I think also, I really like.
Wait, wait, Rita, Rita, I, Matthew, and then you.
That's okay. I, I'd like the seventeenth. I think though, I want to give the superintendent the freedom to, to do what's best for the district. With her knowing that the preference of the board, if it is such, is the seventeenth.
And her own. And I just want to make sure we're legit and, you know, we can do this.
I think we can do this tonight if, if you want to.
I agree, and I, I feel that it's very important to have a lot of the teachers there and sometimes when it's put off. And it's days and days after the, the students have really graduated. You know, I, I, I think it's very important to have the staff, their teachers there. And when it's too late, sometimes there aren't that many teachers there. So I like it the seventeenth.
So, I mean, we could vote on it tonight, folks, but I would just much rather have a yea or nay from Susan and I promise you it's going to be on the agenda. For the following Monday. Does one week make a difference? Because it seems like the will of the board is to go to the seventeenth. So let's consider that, like, that should be done. But then how about if we just give Susan that chance to get ahold of the State Board of Ed?
That's fine with me.
Me too.
Dean?
When, when do we? I mean, I got my mother-in-law to go by. I haven't gone through the Fitch school system myself and I can't keep track, but. Going by my mother-in-law who used to teach at Fitch, she says, how, how come you haven't set a date yet? We always set a date by now. So. My question is, when do we typically, if anybody can remember, when do we typically set the graduation date by when?
Well, if we understand this and follow what they're saying, Dean. We actually can go back, if we get this all straight for this year, we can go back to next year and set a date and put it on the calendar.
Yeah, we can.
Like now.
I'm just saying historically.
Want to make sure we've got, you know, this.
Historically, we would set it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, historically, when do people expect the graduation date to pop out from the Board of Ed? About now?
I, I would say, yeah, especially when the grad parties were really big, they wanted to have as much ahead of time.
And there was that April language in there too, so we always like to get that done right around then.
Well, we always did it when the calendar went out. Like, the beginning of the year.
But it was tentative. It was always subject to.
No.
No.
Because we used to allow, and at one time there was built-in snow days around Memorial Day weekend and, you know, there, it was all padded. So we always had a graduation date set when the calendar came out.
It's an interesting concept that we padded.
We did, we did. We used to have quite a bit of padding. We had like four or five days. You know, like in the eighties, I think it was, the nineteen eighties, early nineties.
All right, so does anyone, is anyone hugely offended if I just say, let's just put this on the vote? For, we'll, we'll hold a special meeting next week so that we can get it on and parents can know and families can make this decision. Does that?
We do have a meeting scheduled for the sixteenth anyway.
Right. All right.
It's not on Valentine's Day. That's right. It's, so the, the vacation is, okay.
The vacation's the next week, right?
Vacation's next week, so don't we have?
No, it's the twenty-first, isn't it?
No, we have a meeting on the sixteenth.
Yeah, but the vacation is the, is the twenty-first for Val, I mean, for President's Day weekend, right?
That's right, you're right. Twenty-first and twenty-second is the long weekend.
No, we get, we get, we get to, we get to spend Valentine's Day together, folks.
No, I don't think we do. We get the sixteenth together.
Yeah, no. We canceled the fourteenth and went with the sixteenth.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
On the fourteenth? Oh, great, okay.
All right. I'll figure that one out. All right.
Well, you guys did a great job getting through all of this. This was a lot tonight.
Can I ask one more question about the budget? Because I'm still unclear about the item. Is that okay to take you back a couple of pages? Or no?
Oh, right, it's still on.
We're still on, so go.
Okay. Back to five dash one oh one, administration line one oh five. Now, to me, it's still a ten thousand dollar increase because on FY twenty twenty-two. They were going to make a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then on FY twenty-three, they're making a hundred and forty-two thousand. That's a ten thousand dollar increase.
So it's a matter of working ten months versus twelve. Or something like that. Or, you know, so it's an increase of time doing the job. So they weren't here a full year, so they didn't get a full year's pay.
Right, that's what you said.
Here a full year.
Okay, but from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, that's a ten thousand dollar increase.
But the person was hired.
And probably hired at a higher rate.
This is a new person?
Yes, yes.
In this position?
Yes.
Okay, so you hired this person at a higher rate. Our salaries are out of this world, I'm telling you. I'm going to come work for Bratton. Thank you.
I will, uh, take a motion for adjournment.
Yeah, that's one thing for good and well.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
May I ask one thing for good and welfare?
Yes.
I really think on this business of reimbursements, where the reimbursements go directly to the town. We should very prominently be able to tell the town that our budget of. X. Y is going to come back to you directly to the town. So that you're authorizing us for X and we're spending X, but you're going to be getting back Y. And that will lower your net out-of-pocket expenditure in terms of the increase. Thank you.
I couldn't agree with you more. That's why I've got that nifty slide and if you notice, every presentation starts. With here's how a, a town. Is able to afford education and it's not all from the taxpayers. A, a big chunk of it, remember. Is from, you know, monies that come into the town. So it's the greatest slide to start with.
Okay. So they have a motion, they have a motion that's on the floor. And it's been seconded. So all those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is to adjourn, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain?
Say goodnight, Grace.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.